The following program is sponsored by John Chatch's Insurance, your local farmer's insurance agent located at 800 Avenue G in Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Ely TV Channel 3-2 in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, March 13th, 2014.
May you please, everybody, please turn your cell phones off with my presence. Could you please follow me in the flag of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without any doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the privilege of living in this fine city of Ely. We thank you for our city council and hopefully can lead us and mold this community according to your will. We ask that you bless our community and direct its leaders in their deliberation to guide us to reach full potential that Ely might be the best city that it can be. And for all of this, we give you the praise, the honor, and the glory. Amen.
President.
Here.
President.
City Engineer Albert.
Here.
City Building official presidency.
Here.
Move on to public comment. Comments not exceeding three minutes in length will be accepted from the general public in attendance. If any remain, there may be discussion upon these comments. No vote, decision, or action may be taken upon matters raised under this item until it is formally placed on agenda. Comments during the discussion items will not be accepted from the general public. Section 805 of Nevada Old and Meeting Law Manual indicates that the public body may prohibit a comment if the content of the comments is a topic that is not relevant to you or within authority of the public body or if the content of the comments is willfully disruptive of the meaning by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of others to speak. For that, we're open for public comment.
Hi, my name is Chris Burke, the city resident. I'd like to know how much longer the city council is going to ignore the fact that the city treasurer doesn't know what she's doing in her position. The quarterly report on the revenues and expenditures for the period ended December 31st, 2013, posted in the Ely Times for the general fund is incomplete and not accurate. Under expenses, there is a major expense that is not listed, and under revenue, there are some revenues that are not shown. If you add in the expenses left out and the revenue that should be listed, the year-to-date actual and fund balance should be approximately $190,000 plus than what is stated. For the road fund to show $199,000 in the rev for the period ended December 31st is then excusable. I know the treasurer doesn't know what she's doing for this fund to be in the rev this way. You people have a severe problem with your books, and for you to sit back and do nothing is wrong. You all took a note to protect the city from harm, and for the traders being lethal to the city and the bankruptcy can be considered now grievance on your part. I will be checking with the Ethics Commission, and if I am correct, I will be filing ethics filings on all of you. I've been trying since January 24th to get public information and have filled out the request forms for it and have pitted brick wall. The information I have requested is on the finances of the city and other items of concern on budget items, on expenditures, on the non-budgeted items that have been bought. I have been told it's either protected under law or it's on the attorney's desk. If you call the attorney's office, he is always out or he will not have, or he'll have to call you back, which he never does. I also received an email from the attorney that I am not to use his email address for my purposes. It is the same email address listed on your website for the city's legal counsel. I thought this counsel said that we're going to be transparent to the public and not hide anything, but I guess it doesn't apply to your staff. A question I've asked in the past, I'd like to know what the council is doing on making the public works director getting a class three water license for the city drinking water. You're held then on making contractors spend money for backwater preventers and other items to protect the residents, but you don't care if you have someone qualified to oversee water systems on a daily basis.
I'm just warming up. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there's nothing in the packet given the history of the money's loan to Mr. Bassett. There's nothing in there that shows when the loan or loans were approved, when they were put on an agenda to approve them. That should be known to everybody. You've got new councilmen, you've got people in the audience that don't know. I'm one of them. I haven't missed too many meetings, but I'm curious as to where we're at and why we're at where we're at. I'm concerned that initially Mr. Bassett stated that the loans were interest-free. Now it appears the taxpayers are expected to pay interest for another person's loan. I'm concerned that you should assume the non-interest rate. Other than that, with that amount of money, no one ever went out to bid, not that I'm aware of. Or if it was, where's the proof? All of that needs to be approved, you know, for the meeting. When was that done? Mr. Chairman, I've yet to receive a list of those home occupation special use permits that you have reviewed over the years, 2010, 2014. And that review would have come from your client commission. They're dragging their feet, they're dragging their feet, you can't do much better. But that needs to be shown. You're not collecting all of the revenues you're entitled to. Mr. Chairman, in reviewing what few burner reports I've been provided, I've yet to see the word of county commissioner John Ambrose of the Qui. Did you receive a very good regarding construction of his new home? When did he apply? What fees did he pay? Who was notified? When was it put on the agenda and who approved it? That was done under a previous administration. Mr. Stark has complained about not getting information. I can understand why with previous administration, I would hope the new one would be much better. Mr. Chairman, I've yet to see whether there are anyone in the copper queen that ever applied for narrowing of Canton, near the facility on the corner of Canton and Red Case. Then again, when was it put on the agenda, who applied? When were the fees paid? What was collected? Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about the ADA compliance and getting into this building. Do they have road curving? Do they not have the proper entrance way or access way to the handicap ramp? On either side, you have telephone poles that are blocking the sidewalk. I mentioned that numerous times here. I've seen no action. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know if Mr. Rex Stark paid for the damage caused to the city equipment. He may have mentioned about Mr. Sederstrom damaging, I think, a meter or some device. I believe Mr. Sederstrom paid for that. Other than that, you need to give his money back. He was acting in his official capacity and things do happen. Mr. Stark should know that.
Anyone else for further comment? One's twice gone. We'll move on to city departmental reports. Fire chief.
Nothing additional to report? Any questions?
Just not lost. Police chief, city park treasurer.
The only thing I have to report is that we started on budgets for this year '15.
City attorney? City engineer?
I'll just go over a pile of a few things that we've been doing. We've been real busy this last month since the last meeting. We did have a meeting with the tourism record looking at possibly doing a joint road project at current convention center. So that went well. They decided to get a committee together to try to further coordinate that and plan that. By bringing funds into all entities, which would be the city EV, the RTC, and some tourer money themselves. That went pretty well. We have also been continuing to update the utility drawings as we discussed part earlier. We did get some information from the engineers that did the expansion of the landfill. Based on that information, we went out and we completed the work. That was requested of us by Tom. That would help them coordinate with their next lift up the road. So we've also been working to get our NDOT miles certified certifications back into NDOTs. We unfortunately had some computer issues, but we just resolved them, so that should be taken care of here very shortly. We are currently working on drawings to do that fill station now, of course, that we've been wanting to do for a while. We also did purchase that software that I was explaining that would be of benefit to the city. So we have purchased that software and we're now in the process of getting all of the city's infrastructure into that software. It's a very powerful software and there's a lot of infrastructure to put in. So that is again, it'd be an ongoing process where we can have. And then also dealing with our budgets, the last thing that I was doing, getting some cost estimates for our budgeting. We're doing some cost estimating for some of the runoff ponds out there in landfill. They're designed with the expansion and hopefully that expansion is going to be approved soon. And hopefully this next coming fiscal year, we'll be able to get some of those runoff ponds. Questions?
Thanks, BJ.
Okay, thank you.
Road work director? Now recess this meeting of the city council so they can have Railroad Historical Foundation. Sam, would you run that meeting?
Sure.
Do you have the agenda?
Yeah.
I know we do. Just I've got so many other papers here with it. Try to keep them in order. All this meeting of the Railroad Agenda and the Railroad Historical Foundation Board into order. Public comment? Did you have any public comment?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So I get for not having this thing. Trusty Sederstrom, discussions or possible action, confirmation of the White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Management Board's action of February 12th, 2014, approving a promissory note wherein the White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation promises to pay Mark and Joan Bassett $72,399.22.
Before I make a motion to approve this receipt in this moment, I just have a few questions about one of the receipts. I guess Mark's not here, but do you know the answer?
Mark, John Ginoli, chairman of the foundation, Railroad Foundation Board. Mr. Bassett is in Washington DC. According to all the children. In the last meeting, we talked about the Whipple car. We ended up with the Mark Requla car, and that was the same one that we were talking about last, that the foundation owned, that Mark said that became the property. The foundation threw a lawsuit and storage charges. In this list of receipts, I found one that I just have a couple of questions on. Take copies. Is this the one I'm talking about? Give Mr. Ginoli one. The receipts for $15,000 that Mark must be paid back for, and it says, "White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation enters into a contract with J&amp;M Railroad for the repair of the Mark Requla coach. A 10% discount will be given for prepaid. J&amp;M Railroad has given the White Pine Historical Railroad a check in the amount of $15,000 on December 4th, 2005, for work that was done on the Mark Requla coach for the amount of $15,000." Was that? I don't wish to sandbag your roots, but I don't have the answer to your question. That's when you're going to have to correct the mark. Okay, well, maybe this will help. This has got your signature on it, an approval of a lease agreement. It's a lease, it says, "Lease between Mark and Joan Bassett and White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation. This lease is for a period of 10 years for the purpose of storage and operational rights on the foundation property of the railroad passenger car owned as the Mark El Requa. In consideration of the foundation allowing the storage and operation of the Mark El Requa on foundation property, Mark and Joan Bassett at their expense will restore and refurnish the car. Upon restoration of the Mark El Requa, both the Bassett's and the foundation will have the right to lease out the car to the general public in either excursion service or as a strategic lodging facility. The car will be available for use by the foundation when not used by the Bassett's. The Bassett's will maintain insurance when it is in their use and the foundation will insure the car when it is in their use. The Bassett's will contract with the foundation to supply the parts and the labor necessary to bring the car up to foundation standards for safe operation on foundation property. After the initial certification of the running gear and safety appliances by the foundation, the foundation and the Bassett's will share the cost of running repairs and maintenance. The Bassett's and the foundation will both have the right to lease out the Mark El Requa. Regardless of who rents out the car, the revenues from the operation of the car will be split 50-50 after the production of operating expenses. This car can be used as a private charter, an extra fare car for the bed and breakfast of a lodging facility, or any other uses that are mutually agreeable to both parties. During the term of this agreement, the Bassett's retain the right to move the car off of foundation property and return the car to the foundation property at their expense. Both parties have the right to terminate this agreement within 90 days of notice. If the Bassett's choose to sell the car during the term of this agreement, the foundation still have the first right of refusal. In the event the car is not restored to operating condition in 10 years, the ownership of the car reverts back to the foundation." And I believe the situation is what you stated at the end there. This agreement was signed March of '06. At best of my knowledge, that work was never done on that car. So we're, that's a valid point. We're running close to the 10 years where something needs to be done.
Well, actually, my question is, if the car belonged to the foundation, why is there at least that the Bassett's had it?
I'm afraid we're going to have to direct that to Mark, because I don't have your answer. Does anyone in the railroad that knows the answer to that question? That'll have to go to Mr. Bassett.
Okay.
Can you make sure everybody wants a copy of this?
Okay.
Is that all?
Yeah. Would you like an explanation of the status of the loan situation at this point?
Sure.
The loan has been executed between the foundation and Bassett's. It was executed on February 12th. The issue was raised regarding interest on that particular loan. The Bassett's never desired to have any interest paid on that. I told Mark that I thought that was inappropriate. The Internal Revenue Service involved what they call an imputed rate. If you do not charge that rate, they assume you should charge that rate and they will consider that a gift and it causes tax consequences. If you look under the IRS rulings, you'll see that for a midterm imputed rate for a obligation of this length, which is considered midterm, is 1.95% as of February. That 1.95% was incorporated into that note. They have made their initial payment on that loan. Mr. Bassett did make the comment to me that his intent was to donate the interest back to the foundation, which I said, "That's entirely a fraud, Eddie Mark." So that situation has been involved.
I'm sorry, John. The promissory note that you're talking about, and what is the interest rate on it?
1.95%. Let me give you a copy.
Okay, because the copy that was in our package said 3.5%.
3.5% is a long-term, and I have to lay claim to making that mistake. I was thinking anything other than five years, and I've reread the regulations. It's like a 3 to 6.
You're talking about like a federal rate?
Right, yeah. Correct.
So this replaces what was given to us in our package?
Yeah, the 1.95, they just got us the, it's the most illicit present.
Can I speak to this issue? Bruce, I realize this is your agenda. I don't want to do anything other than comment on this. But I personally think that this is something that the foundation should have been taking care of for a long time. Shouldn't have been allowed to practice, should not have been allowed to happen. It did, we caught it, we're correcting it. I think it's a foundation issue. The receipts that were provided to me, it's going to raise more questions than they have provided answers. I think it's appropriate just to leave this matter in the hands of the foundation. They've created a payment plan here, so they're taking care of this particular loan. And I would believe that the council, the board of trustees, the railroad, leave this with the foundation to handle. It appears they're taking care of this at this point. I'm going to trust them to make sure the receipts are appropriate. Questions that come up, obviously, will have to be dealt with. But I think it'd be appropriate to quash this.
Well, there's been a motion, maybe quash it.
No. I just, I think I just did.
Okay, I second that, but I just want to say one thing. I just find it hard that you're referring me back to Mark, but you signed the direct lease agreement for the foundation and you're telling me you don't know about it.
I didn't say I didn't know about it.
Well, you said I should refer to Mark about it.
Well, if you want the best answer, I mean, this is '06. I don't know how old you are, Bruce, but I don't remember what, 86 days ago. I admit signing that, and I know that was an arrangement between the Bassett's and the foundation in order to take care of the car, and the intent was to do work on the car. Best of my knowledge, that work was never accomplished for monetary reasons.
Do you know who owns that car now? Is it the Bassett's or the foundation?
I would say the Bassett's probably own the car as of today.
And he got the car from, basically, Whipple gave it up because of storage fees. Is Mark paying storage fees to the foundation?
I don't believe Mark's paying anything. I think it's housed there, waiting to be worked on after this joint agreement. The work has never been undertaken.
Hey. Yeah, I, I second you. That's all I have.
Is that actually motion there? Okay, if they're moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed? Number two, White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Management Board Chairman, John Ginoli. Discussion for possible action, approval of the amended and restated articles of incorporation of my laws which were approved by the White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Management Board on February 25th, 2014.
I believe you all have the correct copies of the articles of incorporation of my laws that the foundation voted on that I've asked, trust me. Clearly, these are documents that would need to be approved and accepted by the council. And that would be the intent of this particular file.
My particular inclination is to let the process of appointing that review committee take place before we look at that fully. It would be, I think, a more germane application of that committee's function to look at those amended articles, because it could have a great bearing on the relationship between the city and the railroad and the foundation.
I have no problem with that, Sam. Thank you. This was an effort on the part of the foundation to be proactive in trying to offer some solutions. I know as a later item on the agenda, the ad hoc committee, assuming that all its dangers, that committee will be formed. This certainly could be a document, could be presented at that time and gone through as a starting point.
And thank you for putting the forward on purpose. Any discussions, gentlemen? That's my suggestion. Do we need any action on that, Richard? Do we need to add that to me? Assuming of course, as he mentioned, that there will be an ad hoc meeting.
How close are we to getting that happening?
We're supposed to work on it tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
You can do it two ways, okay? You can do a motion, let me do a second, and see what you voted. And if it fails, then obviously, this isn't going to happen at this point. We can quash it completely or table it for a nice meeting if you believe that you're going to be ready to address this at the next meeting. So those are your three choices.
I'm not sure I'm able to make a motion. Road to quash this. Has one of them been seconded? Any comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, Caris? Number three, White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Management Board Chairman, John Ginoli. Discussion for possible action, approval of amendment number two to highway agreement number PR 396-12-063 regarding the Nevada Northern Railway Rehabilitation Project, changing the payee from the city of Ely to the White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Incorporated, DBA Nevada Northern Railway Museum.
Okay, this is related to the highway agreement. That these were monies that were granted from Senator Reed several years ago. Seems like it's taken an eternity to find its way through the pipe. We finally got the money, a portion of it, distributed out of Carson City. Unfortunately, when Carson City distributes the federal money, they want a 5% for money themselves. So the initial distribution, and Attorney Sears can probably speak as well better than I can, the initial distribution of money out of that source was to pay off the loans to the power companies, the $375,000 each to power companies. The reason that the city was put in place to accept the payments and handle the paperwork and the grants was to facilitate those payments of those two loans. The problem that creates outside of clerical is that Mr. Sears was able to convince the two power companies to forego the 5%. So it was very much appreciated, and it obviously saved the city a substantial amount of money. The reason for changing this now so that it comes to the railroad is because of our tax exempt status. We can get the remainder of the money, put it into our track. The state is still going to want their portion, but we've made arrangements with the line to do it. to do an in-kind contribution in the form of rock, which will be placed on the line as ballast. Therefore, the city doesn't have to more enroll the foundation.
The mine is providing that ballast.
Have to come, come up with the money, the cash to offset that five percent when it comes out of the state of Nevada.
And isn't the mine providing that rock for the ballast?
Correct, yeah. Rock is supplied, has, has agreed, yes.
Can I ask a question? Discussion, cut to Sam.
Yeah, discussion.
In two meetings, I remember Marty asking Mark to bring us the letter from the mine stating that the, the rock, and it was never provided. And we'd asked him, well, and I know was asking in two meetings to provide a letter from the mine so that we could in turn send a thank you letter to the mine. But we didn't wanna send a thank you letter until we saw proof that the mine was willing to, to do what Mark said they were willing to do. That's one problem I have with that. The other one is, when Mr. Sears got that money to pay the power companies, this question's actually for Jennifer, how long did it take you to write a check to the power company from the time you got the money to pay the, the power company?
Okay, when we received the money, we were still working with the two power companies. If we paid them in full, if it was agreed upon on the amounts, and me and the attorney worked with them close to close and came to an agreement, and the next paper, the next check card, we kind of a check and sent it overnight. So it was pretty fast.
Yeah, I brought that up, 'cause I remember you, you know, you pushing, you gotta send these out, yeah, I think you even mentioned that you sent it overnight.
Yep.
And, and we were assured that, that that got paid. In the audit, one of the questions were raised that, that Mark uses money that were, for one thing, and puts in other places. This kinda guaranteed the city that that money that was meant for the power companies went to the power companies right away. So, so that's, that's just my comment on, on the issue.
Well, and I, I appreciate that concern, and it certainly worked well initially, but the problem now will be if, if we advance the remaining roughly one point seven million dollars and it goes through the city, because we're tax exempt and you're not, I don't think you can be guaranteed to, I don't wanna say quadruple, but promised in mine will be willing to do the same arrangement with you that they're willing to do with us. So that, that puts you in a, in a bit of a mine paying that five percent. I sat in on the meetings, the discussions that we had with Mr. Dunson when he made the agreement with us, and I know there is an email out there. I do not have that, that email. Certainly to get you a copy of that.
Has anyone talked to Kerry's successor of the mine? Has anyone talked to Kerry's successor of the mine about this? Has that moved on to Chile?
I guess one of my concerns was when Mark mentioned it, he didn't mention, and I don't know if this is true or not, that the mine, the mine was willing to, to give us the rock, but they would not cover the cost to crush it. And I, I guess that was a concern, I was wondering, you know, about.
That's on my recollection, what Kerry said at that time, they would give the rock a usable, usable condition. And, and, you know, the rock is not the absolute best material, but it is a reasonable in-kind, and it's a lot better than anything that's under the rail right now. So, yeah, I, I think, Sam, that's a legitimate point, if Kerry's moved on to South America, obviously, that's something that needs to be resolved.
Do your people wanna make contact with them, or do you want us to make contact with them?
I think probably you should make the initial offer, considering the fact that Mark and I went on this with them before.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify a few things. First, just in the interest of the two power companies, they not only forgave the five percent, they also forgave interest that would have been due on that for a substantial period of time. So they certainly deserve recognition for that. I don't, with respect to the rock, that when BHP closed in nineteen ninety-nine, the city, the foundation had a lease agreement with BHP, and the city threatened to sue BHP over that closure because they owed lease fees for, I think it was another five years. Part of the settlement of that negotiation and that potential lawsuit was they, BHP agreed on suing that, and I believe that that obligation continues to its successor to provide ballast to the foundation. They have ballast stored at the mine that was dedicated for that railroad. So there's, they're willing, and I obviously don't wanna interfere with their willingness to make a gift, but they also have a legal obligation as a successor interest to give ballast to the foundation based on that old settlement agreement.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's been more light on our subject. Are we?
I've got a question for John. In what Mark wrote in his report, he almost seems to suggest that the five percent penalty that went to the state, for example, on the portion of the money that repaid the power companies, wouldn't apply to this if it's paid directly to the foundation. Is that, is that true? Or does the state get its cut regardless?
I think the state gets a cut.
Okay.
Anything needs to be distributed, is my understanding.
I would guess that would be true.
Unfortunately, I think that's a legitimate understanding.
The auditors were very specific. They, they were quite blunt, that one of their, one of their failings, failings that they noted was that grant money was not being handled properly. I think having this money, these funds go to the city and into the foundation, you know, to a lot, ensures that that oversight will be great.
Any other comment? Because it also says here for possible action, I think the possible action would be appropriated and should consider, and we might make a motion, I believe, to, does it make somewhat of a, to perhaps little Mr. Sears up to visit the folks at the mine to, you know, bring this back to the amendment, see what that status is now that we have to do, have to talk. I just toss that out for consideration since I can't make a motion.
I think the foundation's capable of doing that, I don't know. And they've got it in the first place.
Well, the, the agenda item, I said, lost my place here, is the question in front of us is whether to have the money go directly to the foundation or to the city and then the foundation.
You're suggesting we just have it pushed through to the foundation, right?
No, not mine. I was talking about, Sam was talking about the rock.
We, we ended up talking about something that's not doing a good job.
Just as a point of clarification on this process that this change order is addressing is that the city would be responsible for carrying out the billing during this project ultimately. It's who will be submitting these bills to the state and who will be providing all the backup paperwork and seeing this through so that we can get that. It, it, it was convenient to do that while we were paying off the loans, but as we proceed forward with this tract project and we're dealing with bimonthly or even more frequent billing with the contractor and the engineer that we've hired, it would just expedite the process for payment of our contractors as well as proceeding with the project if the foundation could take care of that in-house instead of dealing with a larger bureaucratic network. But that, that, that's what we're trying to address here with this change order, and that's what the state is also trying to address with that.
So you want us to pay those bills?